Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order at 6:04 of the South Lake Town Grandville Regional School Committee. If you would like to make a public comment this evening, or two sections of this agenda in which we'll read public comments, please send your public comment in an email to the superintendent at stgrsd.org. Please include your name and address in the body of the email. Okay, first up, I will entertain a motion to accept the secretary's report dated March 30th, 2021.
So moved. Hi, second.
Any committee members have any questions, comments, or changes that they would like to make to that secretary's report? All right, hearing none. We will do a roll call vote. Pam, you're up first.
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
How's you, Ryan?
Yes.
Jeff is a yes, so it's a 6-0-0. Okay, warrant articles were sent out, I believe, last week. If you have who not sign them, please do so and return them back to the main office. Correspondence, anything this evening?
Chairman Hool, I do not have any.
All right, at this time, it's time for a first public comment. I'll ask Amy to check the superintendent account and see if there are any public comments this evening.
Chairman Hool, I have no public comments in the email account.
Well, thank you. Moving on to the student advisory report.
Good evening. It's Annette St. Jox reporting tonight. The third quarter ended last Friday, and report cards will be emailed out to parents this Friday. A junior, Emily Booker, set a new record. She ran the 55-meter dash on the indoor track team in 7.7 seconds. This past weekend, I was personally able to attend the 2021 Massachusetts Association of Student Councils Conference. From this conference, we talked about leadership, delegating current problems we have been facing within our school's student councils, and how to change for the future. Overall, it was a very good conference, and I plan to get more of SRS's student council involved in MASC. Also today, the South Lake Unified Basketball Team had their first win. They defeated Agwam in a close game, 42 to 41 was the final score. That's about it for today's student advisory report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to educational presentations. Up first is identifying and addressing unfinished learning. I'm going to welcome the Director of Curriculum to speak this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Hool. I'm going to just go through a few of our plans to address unfinished learning, and I'm going to keep it as brief as I can, but we'll be prepared to answer questions if you'd like some more information. So we have sort of a three-pronged approach to identifying and addressing any unfinished learning that happened throughout our school closures and our back and forth between hybrid and remote and in-person learning. Once all the kids are back into the building in September, we will begin our multi-tiered system of support. Ms. Gunn had spoken to you a little bit about this in the beginning of the year, but it's essentially a framework for how school districts can build the necessary systems to make sure that all students receive what they need, and it's based on data-driven decision-making, progress monitoring, and the use of evidence-based supports and strategies. So any student who has a need for additional interventions once they return to school will get that, and we'll actually be reporting on that at our next ILT meeting. So there's a little bit more to come on that, but more timely for tonight's discussion is our summer learning program and an after-school tutoring program that I'm going to present to you tonight. Next slide, please. So the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 was recently passed by the federal government. This is the third of the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund packages that has been passed, and according to the regulations for using the funds, the district must receive around 20% of funds to address learning loss through the implementation of evidence-based interventions such as summer learning, summer enrichment, extended day, after-school programs, or extended school-year programs. It's been estimated that our district is due to receive around about $2 million, based on what we were allocated for the ESR2 grant, and so that would be around $400,000 that we would be required to reserve for these purposes. Next slide. Governor Baker, in a recent press conference, also made a nod to summer learning, saying that everyone, all districts, should be pursuing some sort of a summer school strategy, and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is encouraging schools to provide students with engaging, standards-aligned summer programs to help accelerate learning. DESI has come out with a few ideas of their own that they are hoping to offer to districts as resources, but they're in their very early stages, and I think it wise for us to begin to plan our own program, and then we can plug in any additional supports that come from DESI. Three that we're kind of waiting to see are acceleration academies. That would be the to supplement, not supplant, any regular summer school programming that we would want to put into place. It would happen the week before school. There's a grant attached to it. There's a lot of strings attached to it as well, so until we hear more information about that, I think we'll continue on with our own plan. They also announced last week they have started a vendor bid for some summer math acceleration programs, so that's still just starting out. And yesterday, or early today, they announced some plans to provide a summer enrichment program for English learners, and the vendor bid solicitation was just posted on April night, so they haven't even identified the vendors yet. So again, we're going to plan what we're planning, and if we want to add some DESI resources later, we can. Next slide, please. So what are evidence-based best practices for summer learning? I did a little bit of research, and I found some information on this published by the Hanover Research in 2017, and in terms of program design, they find that the most effective summer learning programs provide a structured learning opportunity that are linked to our mass frameworks and standards. Engage students in recreational and enrichment activities as well as academics. Build positive relationships between peers and adults. Are attended by students of varied skill levels, so not only for kids that are struggling. They're voluntary and they're full day. In terms of program administration, they recommend that you start planning early. They actually recommend by January, but we'll do the best we can, starting in May. And also, we've made a decision to appoint a district-wide coordinator to oversee the program to make sure it's super successful, it's well-recruited, and everything runs smoothly over the summer. Next slide, please. So what we're recommending is a theme-based program built around a project-based organization called Camp Invention, which is a STEM curriculum aligned to the standards. It's a prepackaged sort of a program, and we actually ran the camp as a standalone camp probably about six or seven years ago. Super hands-on. Camp Invention is a nationally-recognized K-6 summer enrichment program, and it would provide us all of the curriculum, all of the materials, so it would be very easy for teachers to implement that, and then we would build onto that curriculum that Camp Invention would provide to us with ELA and mathematics extensions to make that super fun and engaging for students as well. It's designed, the program, to combat cognitive side over summer vacation, and it gets students ready for learning upon returning to school in the fall, so it's not going to target specific students for specific interventions. That will happen through the MTSS once we're back in school, but it will reconnect kids with their peers, reconnect them with their teachers, give them a chance to get their brains working again, and do it in a fun atmosphere. We are recommending that it be a three-week, full-day program that runs just three days a week, though, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from 9 to 3, in person, and we're going to open it up to 50 eligible rising first through sixth graders per week. We thought that that would work for families that maybe are looking to take some long weekends. I know nobody got a chance to travel much in the last year, so this might be families' first opportunities to do so. So in an effort to have good attendance, we think the Tuesday through Thursday for that three weeks is wise, and we've got a couple of tentative weeks planned out there that start in August, the beginning of August, would also give a full week before school starts, give them a little break in between the end and of the summer program and the start of school. And for the program administration, as I mentioned, we have created a summer school coordinator position to begin in May, and that is going to need to be approved by you. I'll show you that job posting after this presentation. Next slide, please. So the estimated cost of the summer program isn't actually all that much compared to the tutoring program I'll talk about later. The Camp Invention license fee is what provides us with that entire curriculum and all of the materials and supplies that go with it, for up to 50 students per week, would cost $6,500. If we were to hire five teachers, so 10 students per teacher, it would cost around about $18,000. That's based on they are paid an hourly rate based on their salary, current salary, and there's a range there, so that could be higher or lower depending on who's interested. All summer programs need to be attended by a school nurse, so for those hours that we would need a nurse in the building, it would cost $2,500. The recommended stipend for the summer school coordinator would be $4,000, and then I just put in an extra $500 for any other materials or supplies that we might need in addition to the Camp Invention materials that align to the math and ELA extensions. Next slide, please. So after summer, once school starts up again, we will be providing interventions to students during the regular school day, but when I looked at what were some best practices in an after-school programs, I found some information from Ed Research for Recovery, which is out of Annenberg Institute at Brown University. It came out with a Design Principles series right around how to help teachers answer questions about how to help the country recover from some of the effects that we're seeing of COVID-19. So they recommend high-dose tutoring, so it's aligned directly to classroom content to reinforce and support teachers' classroom instruction. It's database. They recommend it's three sessions minimum a week with a small group of three to four students at a time. Reading-focused tutoring for students in K-2 is their recommended focus, with math-focused tutoring for older students. They recommend a consistent tutor overtime, so the kid meeting with the same teacher or paraprofessional or volunteer, however we want to go with that. And that, as I was just mentioning, a wide variety of tutors are appropriate. It could be teachers, it could be paraprofessionals, it could be parent volunteers, college students, et cetera. A wide variety of tutors can successfully improve student outcomes as long as they're receiving adequate training and ongoing support throughout the program. Next slide, please. So what I'm proposing is that we do provide small-group, high-dose tutoring for identified students in grades three through eight. I'm recommending that the groups meet two to three times a week for an hour to an hour and a half for each session. We'll identify students for tutoring based on our beginning-of-year and mid-year iReady benchmark assessment data in reading and math, and any other district-based formative and summative unit assessments that show that there's a need for students to receive some additional help. I'm not sure how successful this will be, how popular it will be. When I looked at the calendar, I thought it would be smart to kind of run it in two sessions and maybe pause between session one and session two for a week or two to reflect and make adjustments as necessary. If the first session is not, we're not seeing results, then maybe we don't offer a second session, or if it's not popular, students aren't signing up to attend. And I would like to provide a late bus, as we used to, to provide transportation for students so that they don't have to contend with their parents trying to find them a ride in order to participate. Next slide, please. This one's a little bit more expensive because of the length. Rather than it being just three weeks, it's two 12-week sessions that I'm budgeting around. So for six teachers, I'm saying, say, maybe one per grade level to start out, would be around about $45,000 to pay them for the hours that they would work for the two full 12 weeks, so that'd be 24-week session. I'm also thinking if we could get six paraprofessionals in each grade level as well to work with the teachers so that we can keep the groups of students small based on their annual, on their daily rate, it would be around about $15,000. The nurse, I spoke with Marshall Lamore, who's our school nurse leader this morning, and we wouldn't necessarily need to have a nurse there for those that hour, that hour and a half, unless a student signs up who needs a nurse to administer a medication or monitor blood sugar or something like that. So we would have to wait and see who enrolled to determine whether or not we would need to bring a nurse onboard. And the late bus, I'm estimating $50,000 because LPVEC, we paid 60 grand this year for the Mecca bus, and I'm imagining it'd be a little bit less than that, but there might be, we don't know how, to what extent there would be, need to be multiple runs, multiple times. So I'm estimating a cost at $117,000 for the full after-school program. Now, as I mentioned, there could be volunteers where we wouldn't need to pay a teacher. We might not need the nurse. The late bus cost could come in lower than I expected, so it could go up or down, but I will also just point out, though, that we haven't even really touched, made a dent in that $400,000 that we were required to reserve from the ESR3, so I think it gives us a little bit of wiggle room for responsive needs of our students. I think that's the last slide, Amy. Yes, it is.
Any questions on these programs?
I have a couple of questions. It's Chelsea. I'm wondering, can you clarify for the summer program? Was it one week per kid? Did I miss that? So would it end up being 50 kids or 150 kids possibly?
It could, it could go either way. If there's kids that want to attend all three weeks, I wouldn't turn them away as long as we had space, but if the family's traveling and they can only make it to one, that's fine, too. So each of the three weeks, we can take up to 50 kids, and we'll be flexible about how they participate.
Okay. That's really cool. Actually, my own daughter suggested the after-school reading idea to me once, and so I think that there might be more kids than you think wanting to do the after-school, especially with the late bus. That's cool.
Yeah, that's great.
I was thinking that the suggestion, and you probably have had similar thoughts, but the suggestion for grades two and up to focus on just math might not really align well with our, well, we know we've been working on just reading, and we have a new program going in, or new curriculum base, so I'm wondering if we were going to be flexible and think about upper grades also needing that reading after school as well?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to adjust when the kids get back and we see where we're at. We are, nothing's off the table. I was just trying to think of grade levels that would be good to target just off, sort of off the bat, and then see what kind of interest we get. But the early literacy and the upper-grade math, that was sort of a DESI recommendation, too, so if we ever were going to participate in the Acceleration Academy program, that would be the targeted grade levels and the targeted subjects, but that would be, like I said, in addition to our own summer learning program that's going to give everybody a little bit.
And my last question would be, would other after-school or clubs or programs potentially benefit from these late buses put into play, or does it have, does the monies have to keep super separate from each other?
I think we could make a pretty good support on the social, the social-emotional development of students, being able to be with peers and participate in after-school programs of those funds, but we'll learn more about it when we get more information from DESI about how we are supposed to use that money.
That would be awesome. These are such great opportunities. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Ted. Do we have any feeling on just how, let's say, either bad or good, what position are we in right now with the students? As far as learning?
Mid-year data that we got from the iReady in math and reading, and it was, we were using a kind of, sort of, an amalgam of different reading, online assessment tools right now, because we got some free with our new reading program that we're just kind of trialing for a year, but most of that data, it looks, it looks pretty good. We're making progress, but many kids are below grade level. It is our first year with the program. We don't have MCAS scores to compare it to, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to take a look at the beginning, end of year data and the beginning of year next year, and have a better sense, but there are, there are kids that have suffered some, well, we don't know if it's loss or if that's where they were before, because this is our first year with the program. Unfortunately, the timing of that wasn't perfect, but, but the reports that are coming out of iReady are very impressive, and they've done a lot to keep pace with, with the challenges specific to the pandemic. They have a report that will, if a math teacher's about to teach a fractions unit, they can go in and click on the fractions, and it'll show them, all their students that have a gap in everything that they're supposed to know from the grade levels before, so that they can access grade-level fraction standards, and I think that's super helpful. They also have some great reporting features that help you make groups of students based on what they're missing so that you can be super targeted. So it's, we do have students that are below grade level, but they're definitely making progress, and we, and it definitely has tools that are going to help us next year.
What about at the high school?
High school, this is the first year that we've been using iReady data with high school as well. The high school data was a little bit more bleak, but we don't really know why that is. For example, as students get older, and they're, they are pretty well aware that their grade isn't going to be impacted by the test, and I think one of the tests was actually scheduled on the half-day before Thanksgiving. It may be that we didn't do a good enough job explaining to them the value of them taking it super seriously and taking their time, although we can see if a student rushed through the test and that it's a red flag, and we can go back and find out from the kid, you know, why, why they were rushing through the program and possibly make them take it again.
Jenny, this is Pam. The copy that you're showing us now is slightly different from the draft that we have in our packets, so can you do me a favor and just go to the slide on summer learning? No, I'm taking that back, sorry, after-school programs. One more. Okay, so my first question is, you know, I can see that you're focusing first on grades three through eight, which I think is wise. Do you have similar plans to target high school, or do you feel that it's not as necessary at this point in time?
Each of our teachers received training over the summer, and they continue to receive coaching from our instructional coaches on what we've called just-in-time teaching, so working to identify any lagging skills and address them in the moment proximal to grade-level standards that require those skills. So that is, that, we will certainly adjust, though, Pam, if they feel there's a need. One thing I also wanted to mention that I forgot when I was going through my presentation is that we're also prepared to offer credit recovery over the summer for seven through 12. As our student representative just mentioned, the grades just closed, so if we have a large need, instead of sending them to Agwam, like we would do in the past, if there's more kids than usual, then, then we're prepared to offer something like that in our own district, free of cost to the students, but as of right now, I don't think that there are many students that are facing the need for credit recovery.
And then I can see that you have, you know, proposed two 12-week sessions. Do you feel that from either the student or the teacher's point of view, do you feel that 12 weeks might be a little bit long in terms of kind of feeling like overwhelming? It's not like these kids are going to be dying for more school to begin with. I don't know if you'd feel that you'd have more success getting kids interested in this if you were doing shorter sessions at first?
Yep, and I, great question, because I kind of threw this in last minute as I was thinking through things today and looking at the calendar. I don't know if you recall, Pam, but they were, we were talking at ILT about Homework Help Club that was offered in the past.
Right.
Super popular and very well-attended. I guess I wanted to make sure we have something in the budget that it could span all year, if that was something that it turned into, but again, these are all like some, some kind of high-level thinking ideas that I just wanted to make sure that you are all aware of, and that we could put some sort of a first draft budget in front of you guys so that we can start to plan, but as we start to talk to teachers and recruit kids, we're most likely going to have to adjust this.
And the, on the next slide, the estimated costs, would that be for the entire year, or is this an estimated cost for, like, say, one 12-week session?
This is for the two 12-week sessions, which essentially takes you all year, because the first session would end right before the holiday break, and then the second session would start up when we come back to school in January, but would end beginning of April, so as not to interfere with any of the MCAS testing. Kids just get burned out.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the committee? Okay, moving on to our next presentation. Director of Curriculum is going to review the Summer Learning Program Coordinator job description.
Thank you. So the basic goal for this position would be for, they will take the responsibility for planning, supervising, and implementing the summer learning program to support the enrichment and the remedial learning for the students. So we'd need them to be DESI licensed, of course. We'd like them to have some prior teaching experience and possibly have taken on some sort of a leadership role, and they will be the ones that sort of, beginning, I'm thinking around in May, will help us be, work with the instructional coaches and myself to take that Camp Inventions curriculum and build in the math and ELA extensions. They would also be the person that would facilitate any outreach to the community and families, any recruitment activities that need to take place to get students to enroll. They'd be responsible for recruiting and training and supervising the staff throughout the program. They would make sure that any problems that came up during the three weeks, they would handle that. They would sort of act as the summer school principal, making sure that if someone has a sick, there's a replacement. I was also talking with Matt Lillbridge, our school nutrition director, and we will be able to offer free breakfast and lunch throughout our summer school program, so I would expect them to coordinate that with the food service department, be present on the campus during the program dates to deal with any issues that come up, ensure implementation of the curriculum that we put into place is being, is being implemented with fidelity. They would deal with any student discipline or behavioral issues referred by program staff. As I said, take care of substitutes, recruit and have subs ready, take attendance, and make sure at the end of the program or end of every week that the time sheets are turned in so that everybody that's working is paid appropriately, and then I would love if they could run some sort of a post, a post-program survey to find out if it was well-received, what parts they liked, what we could do better, because this is the first time we've done anything like this outside of any extended school-year programming, so I'd like to gather some data if it's worth continuing to do.
Any questions about the job description? Hearing none. I just want to thank Mrs. Sullivan for her presentations this evening, and we will move on to school choice seats with Superintendent Willard.
Thank you, Chairman Hool, and thank you, Jenny Sullivan, for presenting that information. I know that was a lot to put together in a short amount of time. My presentation tonight is a little bit different from previous years. As I explained at the beginning of this school year, we had a significant decrease in student enrollment. We lost about 93 children this year on our foundation numbers, and when looking at school choice seats for next year, we're being very cautious, and there's a reason for that. We don't know right now if all of the children that left us for homeschooling or opted for a private education are going to be returning to our school district. I can tell you that yesterday, we did send out a survey to all of our families who opted for homeschooling to, they do not need to make a commitment, but it is for us to get a better idea and a better picture for planning purposes only, and for student enrollments for next year. So this year, if you scroll all the way to the bottom, I'm bringing forward a very conservative school choice numbers for you. After talking with Principal Sasso, right now- After talking with Principal Sasso, right now, we just without knowing the numbers and these are the grades that we think we may see the greatest shift of students returning in. We are opting for zero school choice seats in K one and two. After speaking with Principal Carrier, we are offering zero seats in grade three. We are offering three seats in grade four, one seat in grade five, no seats in grade six. That's our largest class at the region at Powder Mill right now. And at the regional school, we are opting for what we always have in the past, which is the five, the five, the five for seven, eight and nine and three and three and 10 and 11 and none in grade 12. I don't want this to set panic in the community. This is just my we by law, we have to bring this to you and get it voted by May 1st for our policy. And we have to get this out to the public. However, if we do see that our enrollment numbers look low and that we may be able to offer some school choice seats in the future, I will come back to you before the end of the school year and ask for the school committee to approve some additional school choice seats. But right now I feel it would be fiscally irresponsible of me to open up seats when we don't know if we are going to have some of our own students return. And I also want to ensure that class sizes do not get large because we know that we want to keep our class sizes smaller to address any learning loss that may have occurred during this year and a half COVID pandemic. If you look at the bottom one, you will see the number of teachers in parentheses next to each grade level. And you will see the number of students we are anticipating with the anticipated class size with the projected enrollment with our school choices. You see that we do not want to add anymore because we are already at 17 at Woodland School. And you can see at Powder Mill, third grade is at 20. And there are specific reasons why we're only adding one in fifth grade after meeting and looking at what we feel is best for our current students. So this is what I am proposing to you tonight.
Any questions for Superintendent Willard on the school choice seats?
So I just think that the date at the top may be incorrect on that very first chart at the top, the 2021 school choice seats voted. That was last year, correct?
Oh, yeah, April 22, 2020.
Oh, that threw me when I first saw it. That's all. It's just a small thing, but I understand your desire to be conservative. I think it makes sense. Obviously, school choice is a source of revenue for us. So how much do you think that this could affect our revenue sources?
As of right now, we usually take about five children in kindergarten. And we do have some students who do leave in 12th grade. I'm not anticipating a great shift because remember anybody who we've already accepted as school choice, they get to stay. This would just be new students. So we're not anticipating a huge shift, but in our school choice, because we are a three to one school district and our school choice revolving account is pretty stable right now. However, if we added too many school choice seats, it would require potentially having to hire another teacher. And that would certainly outweigh the benefit of school choice revenue that we would receive.
Any other questions on the school choice seats? This will be an action item tonight. As she mentioned, we need to vote on it before May 1st. So make sure you have all your questions answered. Hearing none, we'll move on to the last presentation, which is Superintendent Gold.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hul. I apologize for this being so late this year. It just seems like every time we were going to present it on the school committee, there was something much more urgent that took its place due to a change in program, COVID surge or the year that we've had. As you know, a lot of my goals were related to the COVID pandemic. As you can see, they were exactly where they should have been because this year my focus was on managing a school district through the COVID-19 pandemic. The first one was about the P D and about making sure that we are giving our students the most the best we can in the midst of a pandemic. That included working on expediting our one to one device rollout. It required a lot of professional development. It required using benchmark data to look at how our in-person students are doing compared to remote learners. It required us to create schedules where teachers could work collaboratively, as you know, in some of our grades. Some teachers had students for in-person and then when they went hybrid, they had another teacher for the remote portion. So this was a tricky year to navigate and it required a lot of communication. It required a lot of shifting and a lot of growth on the part of our educators, our administrators and our central office staff to work together to provide what I feel was a quality year for the students in South Wicktallin and Granville. As you can see, we did utilize half day Wednesdays. We brought forward a calendar that provided time for our teachers to meet and to meet with coaches and to get some professional development, especially for the regional school teachers as they had to learn how to live stream their classrooms this year because their model required learning synchronous learning for students who were in the classroom and the students were at home. Our K through six teachers, they also needed to be be taught how to really use teams and Zoom for breakout rooms and for remote learning. Although some of our teachers were full in person, they had to have the professional development in order for us to be able to pivot and move into a remote setting. So it required them to have additional professional development in order to seamlessly pivot from one learning model to another. We have provided a robust plan to assure that our students are receiving the maximum on live teaching. I believe we were the only school district that I know of in Western Mass that was K to four, five days in person. Most school districts were hybrid at the elementary level and I was really proud that we were able to provide our early learners and our students with high special needs, the opportunity to be to be five days in person. The special ed students at all grade levels had the ability to come in five days a week for in-person learning as well. We did do our best to implement the one to one device rollout this year. There were delays that were out of our control. And I am proud to say that our I T department with Steve Presnell's guidance and Jenny Sullivan's guidance and Ben Tagliari's guidance and John Grimaldi's guidance were able to adjust and they had to pivot and order different laptops. But we were able to very quickly into the school year, provide all families that needed it a device. And we were also able to purchase hotspots for our more remote families. Next one, Amy. We yeah, we did that as well. That's in there. Goal two was to create a schedule to meet the needs of our most vulnerable and dependent learners. As I said, we worked closely with our teachers' union and our building administrators to put a plan together that had our K to four students in and our students with special needs in five days a week. We did create four MOAs that we were able to return students that were in person, even though we met two of the three closure criteria that really focused on getting our younger students in because there was no COVID at Woodland School and we were able to get them in sooner rather than later in order to get them in-person learning. Effective communication, I felt that this year Amy McLaughlin worked above and beyond. We worked together on everything, but we worked to make sure that we had communication coming out of central office. I would say more so than other communities around. If you go to our website, every piece of communication that we have sent out can be found on our website. We put the COVID active COVID cases right there on our district website for transparency purposes. We tweaked it as we went along. We were receptive to feedback from staff to community, to from the school committee on ways that we could communicate better. And I feel that as the school year went on, we have provided better communication. We have provided more details for families who don't want it, but we've been able to tweak our messages with the important information for those who don't want all the specifics in the first paragraph. And then a much more detailed response at the bottom for people who do want more information. So we appreciate everybody who gave us feedback and we felt that we adapted our communication accordingly. And the last one is the district improvement goals. I did meet with all of the principals mid-year. Again, it's been a year. I did just restart going back and doing my learning walks in the schools the past few weeks since we've been back in person. So I've been able to get into classrooms and talk with teachers and watch learning happen. I am on set to meet this at the end of the year. I just have to set up meetings, but all summatives will be done by the end of the year. But I have to just tell you that principals have been amazing this year. Central office staff has been amazing and I've already met my log demonstrating three visits per school. But my goal is to really be in the schools a lot between now and the end of the year. I felt a disconnect during COVID and I want to get back in the classrooms where the kids are because to me that's what makes a difference in decision making. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to commend you and the district administrators for the very thoughtful and well executed plan that you have put together this year to educate our kids in so many different circumstances. And the professional development that you provided for the teachers in order to be able to execute it is just really impressive and not many districts have been able to execute it as thoughtfully and as smoothly. And I know nothing is perfect. But I've been continuously impressed over and over and over again this year. I think education is really taking a beating. But this district has really risen to the challenge.
And I would like to thank Jenny Sullivan and Ben Tagliari and the coaches for the work they did this year. I really just stayed in my lane and focused on a lot of COVID and Jenny really soared this year and saw what needed to be done and just got it done. And through her leadership, we were able to provide that really robust professional development. And it was really by listening to our teachers and hearing what they needed in order to make this successful. So thank you and thank everybody who was able to do that for our teachers and for our students.
Any other questions for Superintendent Willard? Hearing none, we're going to move on to policies. Now, we have two second readings. Two of the policies were sent back to the subcommittee based on some questions and feedback. So next, next time they meet, they'll work on those two and get back to us. So first up is the second reading of I G A curriculum development. The one sentence here. Any feedback on this one? Okay, and the second one tonight, second reading is I G D, which is curriculum adoption. Any questions on this one? All right, next meeting, we'll do the third and final readings for those two and we'll be voting on them. Next are action items.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hul. I just have to read it because we have a lot of VIN numbers coming tonight and so I want to make sure I have the right ones in front of me. Move to accept the proposal from the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, M I I A, dated March 26, 2021, for renewal of property and liability, professional liability and workers' compensation insurance coverage for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022 recommended.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, any questions on renewing this?
Like, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Presnell. I just wanted to mention they're showing on their renewal summary of 5.7%. And I can't tell whether they're trying to show it as a decrease or an increase. They they say in their letter a 5.7% increase to the premium rates. However, when you actually look at the total cost, their proposal in F Y for F Y 21 versus F Y 22, it's actually a 1% decrease. Most of the change being realized in the actually all of the decrease being realized in the workers' comp coverage, which is a result of transportation being outsourced to the collaborative and those employees no longer being on our workers' comp roles. These rates, if I could just want to mention one other thing, these rates do not reflect the early payment discount, the Maya Rewards participation credits that we get, any dividend payments that the program provides as well as audit adjustments that we usually realize from the workers' comp audit that takes place every year. So it will actually be paying less than quite a bit less than another quarter.
Thank you, Mr. Presnell, for your clarifications. I'm going to ask the committee one more time. Any questions? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote to approve this. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John? Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Passes 600.
Move to approve the following school choice seats for the 2021-2022 academic school year. K 0 1 0 2 0 3 0 4 3 5 1 6 0 7 5 8 5 9 5 10 3 11 3 12 0. Recommended.
So moved.
I second.
Any questions on approving the school choice seats? We'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. 600.
Move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the South Wicktallin Granville Regional School Committee and the South Wicktallin Granville Education Association Incorporated. The agreement, which outlines the terms associated with an extension of COVID-19 related leave for the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year, recommended.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, any questions on the M O A on COVID leave? We'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 600.
Move to approve the South Wicktallin Granville Regional School District District's participation in the MECO program for the 2021-2022 school year, recommended.
So moved.
I second.
Any questions on approving the MECO program? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes 600.
Move to approve the sale of the following vehicles to Fenton Auto Sales of Westfield, Mass. for its bid submitted submitted in accordance with a notice of sale of surplus property, school transportation vehicles dated March 19, 2021. Said bids being the highest submitted for the vehicles listed below. 2008 Dodge Grand Caravan S E VIN 1D8HN44H88B148832, $1,105. 2009 Chrysler Town and Country VIN 2 2009 Chrysler Town and Country, VIN 2A8HR44E29R659733, at $1,167. 2011 GMC Thomas School Minibus, VIN 1GD373BG4B1145443, at $2,375. Recommended.
So moved.
I second.
Any questions on the sale of these surplus vehicles? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, motion passes 600.
Move to approve the sale of the following vehicle to the town of Granville for its bid submitted in accordance with the notice of sale of surplus property, school transportation vehicles dated March 19, 2021. Said bid being the highest submitted for the vehicle listed below. 2009 GMC Thomas School Minibus, VIN 1GBJG31K091165723, at $3,850. Recommended.
So moved.
I second.
Any questions on this surplus sale? Okay, we'll take a vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, motion passes 600.
Move to approve the sale of the following vehicle to Wyben Orchards LLC of Westfield, Mass. for its bid submitted in accordance with the notice of sale of surplus property, school transportation vehicles dated March 19, 2021. Said bid being the highest submitted for the vehicle listed below. 2010 Thomas Freightliner School Bus, VIN 4UZABRDK4ACAN5208, at $500. Recommended.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, any questions on this last surplus sale? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes, motion passes 600. All right, moving on to reports. Up first is Superintendent Willard.
Thank you, Chairman Hul. I have a few things to share tonight. The first is just an update on MCAS. You'll be hearing from your school buildings shortly, but we are going to be offering an MCAS for grades three through eight for our students who are remote. There was a question as to whether we would be able to offer it to students remotely. We can. We are just waiting for further guidance on how to actually roll that out. This year, 11th graders will not be expected to take the ELA or the math for graduation purposes. So they are just going to get the competency determination based on the classes that they have taken. I want to let you know that our return to school started about a week and a half ago. I would say Woodland has already been back to school. We just had a few students return there. But Powder Mill is back in action, and with the number of students that returned, required a different drop-off and pickup procedure. We were a little hesitant on how it would work so far. It has worked well. We haven't had backup. That was the major concern. But I think, again, working with the Southwick Police Department, working closely with them and having their support to implement this, it really was a successful rollout. And it's a much safer dismissal, and we were able to put students right into the cars, and they don't have to walk into that far parking lot. I also want to make, we've been receiving some calls at the central office about a remote option for next school year. We are not implementing any remote instruction next year. We are opening the school district under a full five-day in-person learning. We are not offering the remote option next year. People are calling and saying other school districts are doing the remote option. I want to be very clear that I did attend a webinar, and they're not offering a remote option. They're opening up their own virtual school, which is much more detailed and much more costly than just opening or just offering remote instruction. I did speak with the other superintendents who are part of our Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. They are not offering a single district virtual school either. I do know that a lot of people have called because Westfield is opening a K-81. But I want to, again, make it very clear that this is a school that they are opening. It has a building principal. It is going to have its own code via the state, and there is an extensive application process in order to do this. So we are too small in scale to be opening up a new school next year, and it's not just a one-year commitment. They're looking for you to make a multi-year commitment for this. So I, again, just want to be fully transparent about what it entails and that we have looked into it, and it is not fiscally feasible for us to open up a new school right now. And finally, I just want to talk about the prom update. I spoke with Principal Trammell today when the new prom guidance came out. He did meet with the senior class officers on Wednesday, April 7, to discuss the prom. He shared the new guidance, and they're going to be meeting with him on the 14th at noon to make a decision about what they would like to do for the prom. So I'm hoping at our next school committee meeting, I can update you on the prom. And that is all I have tonight, Chairman Hul.
Thank you for your updates. Up next, the Director of Finance and Operations, Mr.
Can I just ask a really quick question of the superintendent?
Sorry.
Jen, you mentioned MCAS. I'm pretty sure we have dates for elementary. Do we have dates for seventh and eighth grade yet?
We do. We have them. I'm not sure what they are off the top of my head, but if you call the building principal, they will be, or the office tomorrow, they can tell you what they are. We don't have it at the high school yet, but I know they did extend the window, I believe, until June 11.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure. I can check my email and see. I did ask them for what their dates are. I just don't know what they are off the top of my head.
Any other questions for Superintendent Willard? Okay, now we'll move on to Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Presnell.
A big letdown, I have no report for you, Mr.
Okay, moving on to subcommittees and liaisons. We had a finance subcommittee meeting today. We will be having, it's Powers and Sullivan make a presentation on our fiscal report. It'll likely be the first meeting in May. Maybe Jonathan and Ted could fill in any other things that I'm forgetting at the moment.
Most of it's been discussed already.
Okay. Pam, do you have an update for LPVEC?
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize I was muted. So the next meeting is in April, and that's when we have our annual general advisory committee presentation, so I will have an update after that.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, policy subcommittee is going to meet in between and work on two policies that we sent back. I have not met with buildings and grounds since our last meeting. Any other subcommittee or liaison want to report out? Now is the time to do so. Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to our second public comment, and I'll ask Amy to check the superintendent email account.
Chairman Hul, I have no public comments in the email.
Thank you. All right, moving on to committee discussion, any old business?
Chairman Hul, Superintendent Willard, the MCAS dates for 7th and 8th grade are May 17, 18, and 20.
Thank you. And is that all three, math, ELA, and STEM?
I will find out, Pam. I believe it is, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so new business. First up, our first Tuesday, is it our first Tuesday meeting or our second Tuesday meeting? Amy, that's in conflict with the annual town meeting.
The second Tuesday meeting, May 18.
So we're going to have to find an alternative date for that. Or we'll have a very abbreviated meeting prior. Any preferences from anybody?
I'm pretty sure that the Granville town meeting is that week as well. Is it the Granville town meeting that is the 18th?
It's Southwick. I believe Granville and Tolling are both on May 10.
Okay.
Why don't we leave it as this for now? I will stay in touch with Amy and Superintendent Willard, and based on whatever business we have to do, if we can't squeeze it in a abbreviated meeting that evening before the town meeting, then we will send out a notification that we're going to have to change nights. Secondly, it's not on here, but I've asked Amy to and Superintendent Willard to take a look at the high school, either the library or the auditorium, along with guidance on gatherings, so that we can go back to having in-person school committee meetings. Based on technology and what the guidance is, is there any objections from folks going back to in-person meetings?
I can't wait to see your faces.
If we're asking our teachers and our students to, I think it makes sense that we do.
We'll be wearing masks, Chelsea, so that's good.
I'm also wondering, on the same kind of thought process, are there any other also safety guidelines within our schools for our students that could be reviewed, too, as things change, like recess and cohorting or things? Yeah, like, is that under review as well, just while we kind of open things up?
I don't want to see any safety protocols go away with students not being able to be vaccinated and more dangerous strains out. I think if we can make it work with the safety protocols that we have in place, I think the district has done a really good job of implementing them, and I wouldn't want to be in a rush to change anything.
I'm going to circle back to two different topics. I'm going to circle back. Okay, I'm going to circle back to the committee meeting. I'm not hearing any objections from anyone even going back to in-person. So stay tuned to your email. We will work out the new form and give everybody a heads-up prior to the next meeting of what our plans are for the new format.
Oh, and a question on that vein, too. If we do go back to public in-person meetings, it would be interesting to consider still somehow broadcasting via Zoom or YouTube, whatever. And I'm wondering if, isn't there school committee funds potentially that could be used to buy one of those, like, little meeting cameras or something?
I think Amy is working with the IT group to come up with a game plan for that before the next meeting.
Okay.
At the very least, we can do our recording like we did before. It's not real time, but everybody can then listen to the meeting later on. We'll make sure we outline that all in advance of the next meeting. And then, lastly, under, oh, and before I skip over the other conversation that you and Pam had, I think that's up to the superintendent to address as far as the protocols. I'm not aware of any protocols changing, I guess is my comment.
Right, at this time, we are not loosening up any guidelines or structures that we have in place or protocols. In fact, we keep reminding people that although we've been vaccinated, mask-wearing is a must. And we had a fire drill today, and you watched the kids put their arms out to separate six feet from the person in front of them. So we are not loosening any of our protocols right now.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking about going all willy-nilly or anything. I just know from personal children in my life that they would love to play at recess, potentially with other classes, and they miss their friends, so that kind of thing. But love the masks, love the six feet, I get that part. So that was a personal.
Last up is the superintendent evaluation. It's that time of year again. I'm working with Amy to get a survey monkey out to the board. I would appreciate if we could get this completed by the second meeting in May, so we can do a report out and close this bit of business and check the box of getting our responsibility done of performing the evaluation of the superintendent. So stay tuned to your inboxes, and please respond to the survey monkey when we get it out. And if there are no other items, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. I hope everybody has a great evening, and thank you for joining us tonight.